For the 7:30, 7:45 range to be done so that everyone can go home at a reasonable time. Joining us, we have Director Lucy Kemp. She is joined by Bob Lehman and George Rucker. And Director Kemp, I will give you the floor.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, committee and council members and mayor's staff. Thank you for your service and leadership to our community and for inviting the Planning Department to join you today. On a personal note, I'd like to thank you, Madam Chair, for rescheduling my testimony so that I could be with a family member on Monday who had an unexpected surgery, but I regret any inconvenience that this may have caused council members, but I'm grateful for your support today. We are deeply grateful to the mayor for proposing a budget that supports our department's ability to respond to the important planning challenges and opportunities in our growing city. We are grateful for his leadership during this unprecedented moment in our city's history and also for your leadership as well. In particular, I thank Kristin Wilson for her work in this space and helping us to be effective and holding us responsible for our service to the city. So, thank you, Kristin. Joining me today are Bob Lehman, Deputy Director for Planning, and George Rucker, who's Assistant Director of Operations. It really is a privilege to serve as the Director of the Planning Department. We have an incredibly hardworking and professional team who love this city. As you know, our department is responsible for a number of different tasks, but for our viewing audience, some of those key tasks include the development of a general plan, zoning recommendations to this body, reviewing new development proposals, overseeing design standards, preparing new design standards, searches such as UDOs, maintaining official property maps online. A lot of folks don't realize that that is one of the things the Planning Department does. And we provide policy guidance on a range of issues, including the CIB and other matters of interest to council and the public. Lastly, we do propose new council and school board district boundaries following the census, which is, I know, something that's of interest to you. As I reflect on this last year, certainly, you know, much can be said about the challenges that our city has faced, and all of those were reflected in the Planning Department and how we approached many of our issues. But as I think about what's most memorable, I think about the sort of positive outcomes that came from some of those hardships, because this period really demanded that we be creative in our problem solving. And I like to think that as we address some of the challenges that we confronted, that we can carry those lessons forward. So, for example, before COVID, neighbor to neighbor had asked us, can you just get a little more creative in how you do public engagement? And through COVID, we had to do that. We were forced to pull small stakeholder groups together to do online engagement in a way that was much faster than I think ever would have happened. I like to think of planning sometimes as a bit grandmotherly in our approach to, you know, how we submit materials. And we love to have our big, you know, maps and things, and COVID sort of forced us to begin to rely on more electronic submittals and understanding how to work more efficiently. It's much better for planning to be solving problems, not pushing paperwork. And so, I do think, you know, there are a lot more of those sort of anecdotes, but I think this period forced us to be leaner. And hopefully, those lessons can be taken forward. And I think we're a better department for the challenges. We've kickstarted our SP inspection program, and I'm happy to speak a little bit more about that. But it is our goal to ensure that we are contributing to the design of the city and building confidence within this body and the general public about the plans that you're reviewing. So, I'm happy to talk about that a bit more. One of the most profound challenges that we have confronted as a department in the city is certainly around Second Avenue. And here, I would acknowledge the collaborative effort of so many departments working together under the leadership of the mayor's office, Councilwoman O'Connell, and many of you who express support and energy around that rebuilding effort. Planning's role has been one of convener, if you will, and we're setting forth a vision through our work with the community for the future of this important part of the city. And while the impact certainly affected us very deeply and injured sort of the birthplace of our city, I hope that our efforts in this area will renew our commitment to care for those places that are character-defining features of who we are. And Second Avenue is certainly something that speaks to our history, and we want to preserve those aspects of who we are, especially as we grow. And so, this notion of caring for those aspects that make us distinct was really a central point in how we thought about our budget request. And so, for example, understanding that metro-wide, 33% of our city is in slopes. We know that the landscape hillsides contribute to the natural beauty of our city and our environmental sort of well-being. And so, we've requested a hillside development reviewer, which is a position we don't have in metro today, to help us begin to understand what our standards need to be and ensure that we are enforcing those. And so, you know, if you travel to a lot of cities across the US, many of them are sort of built out. And if you travel around Nashville, you see that so much of who we are is in that landscape settings and those villages situated there. So, I think that's a really special part of us, and we want to hold on to it. Second, we requested staff support for our tree standards, which is a collaborative effort with several other departments. There is very little that contributes to the design and function of a city more than a great landscape plan. And so, we're really committed to continuing to work with other departments and do our part in ensuring that that happens very well. We are emphasizing our work around the river, as many of you know, and this is one of the most important features of our city. We've been working as a community for the last 10 or 15 years around new, kind of new work around the river, but we have a lot that can be done. So, we're doing an East Bank Plan, and by necessity, we're looking at the West Bank because that is central to the recovery in downtown around Second Avenue. So, we requested additional resources for our community plan section to ensure that we have planners in the field who understand the communities that we serve. With the most recent spending plan and with the support of many of you and the mayor's office, we have resources for additional planning work that is so critical to ensuring that we develop in a thoughtful way. Finally, we are pleased to work with our community partners and address much-needed resources towards our affordable housing goals as a city. We understand the city needs to be designed in an equitable way, but we also need a plan for housing and ensure that that is integrated into our overall strategies for growth. And so, we are committed to working with you, mayor's office, other organizations such as MDHA, to ensure that that gets done in a thoughtful and comprehensive way. So, you will see two positions there related to housing. So, with that, I want to thank you for your time today, and again, thank you for moving my meeting so I can be a good daughter and also serve the city as well. So, thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Councilwoman Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you all for being here and leading the way in the virtual meeting. I think you all were the first public hearing that we had, and it went well.
That's a dubious honor.
It is, but it went well. So, that's what matters. I'm so excited to hear about the two FTEs for housing. And if you could just elaborate briefly, and you can throw also into that the $500,000 that's in the administrative budget for, I think, contract stuff to help come up, I mean, to... And I know that the Housing Task Force, which I was honored to serve on, has kind of created some short-term goals as well as some long-term ones. And we've got a number of documents that have been created already. The plan that we did in 2015 lays out some pretty specific things. So, if you can talk real briefly about how these two positions and that funding will draw upon that and where you expect that to go, that would be great.
Exactly. Well, I think we have done some important work. You know, you've been a big leader in this area, 2015. And then, the recent Housing Task Force recommendations include some key areas that we need to focus on, including land use integration, data integration, and then setting out an affordable housing plan that is linked to housing policy. And so, my goal is for these two FTEs to focus on those opportunities, ensure that we are integrating those into our broader sort of planning efforts for growth around the city. We can do that through a land use plan. We can do it through coordinating with the folks who manage the Barnes funding and do it through coordination with MDHA. And I think with sort of working all of those entities together, my goal is to develop sort of a strategic plan where we understand what the city's portion of that needs to be, as well as the contributions of the other organizations that are so critical to this work. My goal is not to start from, you know, scratch. We need to build on the good work that has already been done. And I'm happy to sit down with you as a person who's participated in all of those sort of working groups and helped produce that, you know, document in 2015 to come up with sort of immediate steps. But the two staff members, you know, my goal is to have folks who are experienced in this space, who understand how to make sort of the most effective use of the Planning Department and how we work on the land use side, but who can also work with the sort of community-based affordable housing developers and other delivery providers to ensure that we're meeting those benchmarks.
Great, very excited to hear that. And then...
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mention the $500,000. That's to come up with sort of a plan and a plan of action, building on those, ensuring that those are integrated into sort of our thinking. I mean, for example, we need to be able to say that we need X number of housing units, and these are the areas that we want to focus on.
Like a housing scorecard, for example.
Exactly. I know, you've got some ideas there. So, we want to make sure that we implement that well through the plan.
Thank you. And then, totally different, on the hillside, I think that's such an interesting thing. You and I have talked about a view shed study at one point. Is that, are those connected? Is there any possibility that this person, while he's looking at slopes, could also look at, here are some of the most amazing views in all of Nashville, and it's a public treasure that we should protect. Is that...
Yes, yes. I think the hard part of what we need to accomplish is prioritizing those views and the hillsides, right? If you're at 30% of a community, that's a lot of land. And so, we really need to be thoughtful about what hillsides we want to protect, how we want to do it. And I think, to your point, that's a very, that's an important organizing principle, right? And thinking that through, whether it's between parks, whether it's a certain composition, what that looks like, yes.
Great, 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 great. And then, I'm sure Councilmember Henderson will ask very specific questions about the tree person, so I'll just say, I'm glad there's a tree person and whatever we can do to support that. We need to protect Nashville's trees and get them more planted.
I agree.
About Councilwoman Withers and then Councilwoman Porterfield.
Thank you so much, Chair, for recognizing me even though I'm not on this committee. But, you know, like Councilmember Allen, I'm really intrigued by the slopes and hillsides provision. We don't have that many steep hills in east Nashville, other than Shelby Park and the golf course, but I hear a lot about it from constituents who do kind of drive through the county and want to preserve those hillsides and want to... I guess part of it for me is wanting to get a sense, a little bit of what a person would be reviewing. Obviously, view sheds are important, but there are, you know, drainage issues, there are access issues, there are a lot of that land is scarcely buildable sometimes because of soils or a lot of things like that. How would this person work with some of the existing tools that we have, such as the cluster lot provision, et cetera? Kind of what would you be looking for for a person in that position of how they would balance property rights with some of the environmental needs of the county? I'm just intrigued by that, but we'd love to hear more.
So, some of the city's best resources right now in this space are in the stormwater section. But the stormwater section, they do their work really well. They focus their reviews through a very specific lens, which is the performance of the site after it's developed. And that's important. So, all the drainage issues, I think, would continue to be with stormwater. The gap, though, is the hillside standards are a function of the code, so they're really a zoning and planning matter. So, if you want to ask the question of whether or not a particular use is appropriate on a hillside, you've got to start with planning and codes. Stormwater is going to be there to try to figure out, how do you make it work once it's approved? And so, as I've looked at some of the recent developments, and I'm not saying this with judgment, but they are, they have a likeness to some of what you might see in Los Angeles, for example. That may or may not be bad, but I don't think we, as a community, have decided that that's what we want to pursue. And so, part of it is articulating what those priorities are, why they matter. And I do think you're right, there is going to need to be a balance. So, if you start with the slopes that Councilwoman Allen might identify, you know, you've got a number of them that are really important character-defining features of the city, and you look at their ownership and how large the properties are, then my guess is there are going to be some design standards that will help us be able to balance the property rights with the community's need and the environmental need there. So, that's certainly going to be, I think, one of the first things that that individual has to do, is assess the current standards and make sure that they're actually working. And part of that is going to need to be a conversation with us about, is this about hillside development? Is it about protecting view sheds? Or is there something more substantive in the integrity of the site that we want to focus on? And I'm not coming here with preconceived notions, other than telling you it's really important, and if we don't do it, they will just continue to develop, you know? And maybe that's not a bad thing, but I do think it's important for us to make sure that we're on top of it. It's probably going to be a landscape architect or someone with a deep technical experience because there's a lot of, there's a lot of technical, there are needs in terms of reviewing how you approach slope development, is all I can say. We've spoken with the planners in Knoxville and Chattanooga. So, Tennessee is a state that has this issue in a lot of cities. And so, we know how they've done their work, and I aim to take the very best of what they do and dismiss what doesn't work, so.
Well, thank you for that. One other thing, too, we are obviously starting on the East Bank planning study. And I'll just shout, but I think one of the things that I'm hearing from property owners of riverfront property that's not quite in the East Bank is some of that land is very valuable land. In some cases, we have a community plan that calls for development on those sites, and yet, the riverfront constraints make it very difficult to develop in the way that the community plan calls for. And so, one of the things that I'm interested in seeing is, as we're working with, on the East Bank itself, is there some consideration that that might help us, that technical assistance we're going to see, might help us to take another look at how we plan around other riverfront sites in the city? In terms of like, can we have a portion of this site, a greenway, for public access? How do we, how do we make those riverfront sites throughout the riverfront of the city? How do we make them maybe work a little bit better for the, particularly the public access that we could all, that right now are a little bit...
Yeah.
And that's it, that's it for me.
Oh, and that came out perfectly clearly. The answer is yes. We love for plans to be context and site-specific, but the best plans are ones that can be replicated, where you can take best practices and ensure that they're done elsewhere. That's especially true, I think, for riverfront development, because to your point, if we want to have a principle that these are public spaces, then presumably, we at Metro are going to have, you know, standards to ensure that that can happen efficiently. And we have an interest in making sure that that happens, so we're not changing things on a site-by-site basis. No problem, yeah.
Thank you so much. And Councilwoman Withers kind of touched on some of the questions, I think. I'll kind of tie this into the, I had two questions, he kind of touched on one, right? So, I'll kind of tie this into the remaining question. I think what makes it challenging sometimes is, as council members, like, we have been placed into the position of zoning experts, when we are, in fact, not zoning experts. So, we are trying to balance, like, the need for housing in communities with the needs of what's happening in our community, schools being overcrowded, traffic. We're trying to, like, balance all those things, but we ourselves are not necessarily like the experts when it comes to what type of zoning would be helpful for a community. Like, I don't know if 50 houses are too much or too little for this particular parcel of land. So, I think that that becomes very challenging, like, when we're trying to, like, navigate that. And I appreciate, you know, like, the services that you all provide. Do you all have money in your budget or a position of a person that already does this? But is there someone that kind of, that can work as a liaison with the council to kind of help with, like, long-term planning? So, an example, I have a part in my district that there's been a couple of rezonings there, and I don't want to piecemeal it, I want to have a broader idea of what this could look like. And you all have, I know, like, the Nashville Next Plan and I know the community plans, but, you know, that's not really given me, like, the scope of what could this potentially be, right? And what are the adverse impacts? Because I think if I zone these two things or these 10 things, like, 50 years from now, what did I then do to my community? And if I don't have the right knowledge base, I could adversely impact my community. And we see it, like, all around the city, right? Like, we grew so fast and we didn't have the proper infrastructure support. So, I think that that would be really helpful in helping us to, like, balance how to grow responsibly. And again, like, in our area, I know all around the city, but I know southeast because that's where I live. In our area, we have a lot of issues with stormwater and flooding, and whether it is the perception or the reality, when our neighbors see new houses go up and now they're seeing their yards flooding more, it could very well be global warming, and it could be that we're getting more rain than, you know, in previous years. But the neighbors make the connection of, this development went up and now my yard is flooding, right? So, when they think of, like, planning recommending something, they're not, it doesn't appear that planning is, like, doing that work of thinking when you all are making, when you're approving something, like, are you thinking about how this is going to impact the community? And to your argument, I understand, like, you guys are just thinking about the zoning, right? Those other departments, like, maybe stormwater, our other departments have to come in and kind of evaluate that. But can you help us kind of, like, reconcile that and to bring it back to the budget? Do you all have funding for individuals that can, you know, kind of help with that? Like, maybe I'm not tapping into a resource that I know about, or is there funding that you guys can put in place to offer this level of support to council members?
Great. Well, I, first, let me start with the budget question. I'm grateful that the mayor's office is recommending positions in community plans, and that's really where that work can most effectively happen. And an effective community plan section is working at a number of different scales. Nashville Next is an important sort of foundational document that gives strategic direction. But I understand when council members say, hey, what's happening at a smaller level? How are we ensuring that the pieces all fit together in a little more detail? And that's what a strong community plan section can do. And so, as we build out capacity within that team, I think we will better be able to serve communities well at different scales. I think the planning department, some planning departments really like to be in the 20- to 30-year planning timeframe, and that's great. But for a city growing this quickly, you have to be able to work at a little bit closer to implementation, a little bit closer to address the needs on the ground. And so, that's how we focused our budget requests in the last year or two, and it's why we have positioned our planning efforts in that way, right? Even the East Bank Plan is not, you know, it is a 20-year plan, but it is very much a focused on on-the-ground needs. And so, I think we would certainly need to do that, especially in areas that have environmental vulnerabilities, because there are strategies that we can employ that require more work than a zoning look. And so, the answer to your question is yes. And ultimately, my goal is to have community plans situated in a way that they're working with individual parts of town and know them really well. And so, that's another strategy for ensuring that, you know, we're serving the community well, if that makes sense.
It does, thank you. And then, I'll just leave with the last comment. Councilmember Hurt, I think she's gone now. She asked a question to MMPS, and I kind of want to kind of reflect on that with you all. We recently looked at data around, like, equity within departments and diversity, and I don't have the data here in front of me, but I believe planning was one of the departments that could use some improvements when it comes to diversity in staff. And I know, I don't know that there's a lot of diversity in the planners, and I know one of the minority planners just left and got an opportunity and moved somewhere else. So, now, there's even less diversity there. So, my ask is that, as you all are looking at that pool of qualified candidates, that you will keep in mind the importance of that and, you know, maybe partnering with some of our universities and HBCUs in the city to make sure that we're kind of creating those pipelines, to make sure that there's representation just across the board. So, thank you.
Well, thank you for that comment. I agree with you. We have work to do in that space. In fact, the planning profession itself, at a leadership level, is talking about what we need to do to address the issues that you're talking about. And it's hugely important to us as a profession to be able to be responsive to the community in a lot of different ways. And so, last year, we began an effort to advertise our positions in areas that we know. George, if you can pull up the list, I think there are 30 more organizations where we're advertising in the hope to add more diversity within the department. And if you want to speak a little bit of that, I know you didn't ask the question, but I just want you to know that we understand how important that is, and we have taken some preliminary steps to try to accomplish that.
Yes, as Director Kemp said, we've made an effort to do outreach and provide our postings to about 33 organizations that represent diverse groups across the country, including about 17 HBCUs that have planning programs. We try to identify all of those. We have a number of minority-based professional associations in a variety of professions, from architecture to other planning associations, and even sections within those broader organizations that are for minority participants. So, we're really trying to identify those groups, and we're pushing out all of our information when we have a vacant position to those groups to try to do a little recruiting from those particular organizations, so.
Thank you for that, and thank you for that update. That's very helpful to hear.
Thank you, Chair Tunes, and thank you, Director Kemp, for being here. I think everybody knows I'm going to ask questions about the tree position, but before that, I did want to kind of segue from Council Lady Porterfield's question just about employment and staffing. I know that we, you know, continue to lose folks to the private sector, and so, I don't know if you all have done any analysis particular to your kind of salary ranges, and, you know, if you can kind of speak to that. I know we saw kind of almost lost during our multimodal group, and I know we then had a hiring freeze, we probably could have replaced those positions. But, you know, as we look at more kind of strategic positions that augment the, kind of, the standard positions, like the hillside development, the tree coordinator, multimodal parking policy, transportation demand management, all those kind of specialties that we really want to have to keep the Planning Department staffing robust, can you all just kind of speak to that as far as your, I'm so glad we're adding positions for you all, and I probably think you need more, frankly, but can you speak to the kind of the salary, the attrition, and those factors?
Sure. We do keep track of sort of what our peers are doing and also what the private sector is paying. And I think, to your point, the Planning Department is vulnerable to private sector sort of hiring, because we quarterback a lot of development issues in the county, but that's not, that's not really an excuse. I think that, but it's a factor. What we've tried to do before some of the budget challenges last year was begin to do more professional training, sending planning staff to APA conferences and AIA conferences, and really reinforce that this is a place of learning and not just sort of a place where, you know, your career is limited to the cases before you. where, you know, your career is limited to the cases before you. And so, you know, we have worked to instill that, that type of, you know, culture. I do think that, you know, in previous years, you know, two to three years ago, the department was, as you know, really had staffing challenges. And so when you are the planner who's responsible for, like, 15 cases, which is what was going on in land development when I started in 2016, that's a, that is hard and it's stressful. And so I do think in post-interviews with staff, you know, they have talked about, you know, the stress of being in a position where there's a lot of conflict. And, you know, we have just tried to be more supportive and hire in at planner three levels so that staff have more support. And so it's a, it is a, you can't correct it over time, you know? But I think, to your point, or you can't correct it sort of immediately, it takes time. But I think, to your point, adding and building capacity in areas where we know that there are sort of key goals that can kind of spread some of the demand throughout the department in more meaningful ways, I think will go a long way towards staff retention. Land Development, which is the team that had historically had a lot of turnover, has been actually quite stable. And so I think that, you know, I think that those steps will have meaning. But I, the support of council, and sort of for the department, and sort of, you know, saying that education and professional development matters is really important to the staff. And so, thank you.
I appreciate that. And I see that you had kind of a modest travel fund there, I guess, for conferences and that education piece. To that same end, I wanted to ask, and I've asked this in other hearings, because for continuing education, right? So we say that planners have to have a certain certification, right? Professionally registered and so forth. And so our legal department pays for continuing ed. I asked the same question of Director Crumbo, because we have CPAs working in the finance department. Do we pay for their continuing ed? Not at present. I had understood in the past that we did not pay for the required continuing education to maintain the degrees that are required to be a planner. Do we do that now, and just have budget anticipate that?
George, can you speak to that?
Yes. We actually pay for professional membership dues and for continuing education in a, in a way that may not be the most glamorous of all ways. But we have a online service that we pay a subscription for, that our planners can access, to take courses that are required to maintain their certifications. So.
Right. I'm so glad to hear that. I had asked that question maybe a few budget cycles ago, and kind of lost the through line on that. So thank you.
I don't think it's always been that way. So it helps that you, pressing helps. So thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. Well, on to tree-related things. And thank you so much for your, your focus in that area, Director Kemp. I've really appreciated Sean Shepherd and her new role with that policy focus. Councilman Withers mentioned, you know, the cluster lot provision rework, and all that kind of dovetails with some of the hillside, you know, policy, tree policy that we're looking at. And so I appreciate that that kind of more technical aspect of plans review and policy is in your budget. Particularly to the tree coordinator position, I wanted to ask, because, you know, so much, you said, alluded to that, you know, trees are in stormwater, and trees are in codes, and trees are in planning, and, you know, it's always, there's a lot of overlap, and then sometimes people are still kind of siloed. And trying to kind of get that image of what urban forestry should look like is challenging, right? And I know that you've met with Director Potter and Director Herbert to kind of triangulate that somewhat. Do you anticipate that this tree coordinator position would work specifically with the, kind of, the tree corridor overlays? Or there's Council Lady Roberts legislation, my legislation, that expanded street tree requirements? And then the commercial multifamily tree bill that did the same? And I've kind of sensed that there's a little bit of a lack, as we've worked on the specifications to implement that legislation, of that kind of technical aspect. Is that what this person is intended to do?
Yes. That, that lag that you experienced, that gap, was partially what motivated me to realize that there was an issue, and an important issue. Because I think that the corridor space, the street tree space, is so important, but it is probably not as well-defined as some of the other policy areas where in the tree space. And so, you know, what I realized was that the, you know, other departments that oversee this piece of it aren't particularly comfortable telling, planning, this is what we think the specification needs to be. And so clearly, this is a zoning and land use matter, and I will own that. And make sure that we have the specifications that will encourage us to have a great tree canopy. Because I don't think, after talking with those other directors, that that's really clearly in their wheelhouse. And, you know, so we want to make sure that that happens. I think they will do other things as we build capacity. But we're part of so many conversations with stormwater, and with codes, and with public works. And to be able to send a tree coordinator there to ensure that we're coordinating the policy, I think, is really important.
I'm grateful. I appreciate that. And then last question, in particular to staffing. You know, so much of our kind of countywide policy, whether it was the sidewalk legislation of last term, you know, as I think ahead to this, you know, the hillside, slope side, treetop preservation work that we're doing, is, you know, I don't know what we did to do legislation for 532 square miles before we had GIS mapping. Like, you know, I mean, so much of my legislation has hinged on internal to centers, or on this collector, or within a quarter-mile radius of, like, the ability to do that. And so I know Ms. Higgs works in mapping, and I know, you know, as far as when we're looking at this forest mapping that we've done, do you feel from a staffing perspective that we have sufficient staffing in this sort of data space? Like, when we're looking at creating new mapping layers potentially to address, you know, the hillside concerns that we're talking about? Do we have the capability on the staffing side to implement that internally?
You know, I do. We have created an advanced planning and research section that is more devoted to data analysis and mapping. That's under Greg Claxton, who also oversees the CIB. And he just has a great command of sort of resources throughout the county. It's something to keep an eye on. You know, as we grow as a city, we're building capacity. And through this budget, we're building capacity. And we'll continue to keep an eye on issues as they arise, and be candid about the resource needs where they are. But I do feel confident that we have the capabilities now, I suppose. And I don't mean this to be a cute answer, but it sort of depends on the level of service and sort of the level of detail that, that folks want. I sometimes find that the community wants a level of detail that may not be practical, even with a great GIS mapping program. That's not necessarily going to be solved with another research position. It may be solved with some money to purchase the data from someone else. And so I'm really open to trying to figure out, if there's a particular need that we identify, not immediately going to a staffing question, but maybe saying, does USGS have that level? Like, there's some, I know there's a desire for some soil data. Like, you know, that is, that's a very detailed, technical thing, and I doubt we would need that with staffing. We could meet that another way.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Councilwoman Swara.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, Ms. Lucy. I thank you guys for being here. I'm not a big planning person, so all of the planning stuff has been, has been asked. But I want to piggyback on what Councilman Benedict was asking about in terms of the mapping and all of that. And I'm looking at your questionnaire that you submitted, and in looking at the details of that, I see where it says 2022 proposed expense included a software for enterprise GIS implementation. But then on the other side, I see that that was taken off. And so if this is based on the program, the software, and the individuals, don't we need to keep that in any such, very small costs? So I was just, it just stood out to me, so.
Is that perhaps? Well, first, we very much support ITS's effort to create a kind of system-wide data program, and we've worked with them closely on the GIS side. I wonder if maybe the request was specific for our contribution? Or, George, can you clarify?
Well, I'm not exactly sure which, which particular issue. There are several GIS issues that are wrapped up in this budget proposal. But as Director Kemp mentioned, we've been working with ITS to do an assessment of the enterprise GIS system for all of Metro. And that was being run out of the planning department, because the planning department was the original mapper for Metro. So the planning department used GIS as a tool just to do property mapping. Now, property mapping is still occurring in the planning department. But the GIS needs grew well beyond the planning department, into all of Metro. And ITS is just much better positioned to provide those services, and to charge, frankly, for those services to other departments than the planning department was. So we decided, after the assessment, that it was in the best interest of Metro as a whole to move that GIS mapping program over to ITS. And then we still have a departmental effort within our group at planning. But it's just that enterprise system and one of our employees that was dedicated to that have moved over to ITS.
We want to be ITS's favorite client. We don't want to be running the technical program for all of Metro.
Thank you.
That may be slightly out of our skill set, but anyway.
All right. We are coming up on our last couple of minutes. Councilwoman Benedict.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So thanks for all you do. I feel like I've become a planner. But as a couple of folks have said, this is a, you know, as we develop, and certainly as District 7 develops, this is a critical portion of what we've got going on. You know, we've continued to get urban in my district. We do have, we are a portion of East Nashville that has a lot of hills, a lot of stormwater, a lot of issues like that. Your team does a fabulous job of answering my questions. But that leads me to a question that I have, which is when people, when constituents have a question, they want just a quick, simple answer. It's oftentimes hard for them to reach somebody. And this isn't exclusive to your department, but in your department, it is something that I know people are looking for. Do you have enough staff in the upcoming budget to be able to take a call or get back to somebody, perhaps within 48 hours, with an informal review or something of that nature? Is there anything from a budget perspective that we could do to help that level of service be provided to our customers, Nashvilleians?
So we have this, the position, it's the front counter, which sounds so ominous or something, I don't know. But we have two staff that work the front counter every day. And, you know, I think that that is generally sufficient for sort of planning-related questions. You can come, well, before COVID, and hopefully very soon now, you can show up, you can show a plan, you can get advice. Sometimes you do have to wait. But I think that if, if the issues are only planning, then we're good. A lot of times, we'll get a lot of questions that are in the purview of other departments. And so, you know, perhaps that's some of the frustration there, that we, we won't be able to answer those. But I think if you're talking about planning and zoning, that we have adequate staff there.
My colleague from District 6 is reading my mind. And has asked me to double up here in our last two minutes, which is, is the person there qualified to answer those types of, empowered, rather, not qualified, I'm certain they're qualified? Are they empowered to answer questions that perhaps may normally be answered by one of your planning, or a planner, someone with a planner title? Are they empowered to help answer those questions? And, again, help somebody perhaps not put, you know, not wait in line and end up putting more work on other staff within you, but rather empowered to answer the question and help the person just proceed and determine whether they need to talk to a planner, or whether they got their question answered?
So with the support of this council, we were able to add a second counter position, I think, two years ago. And within the department, we created another senior-level position, just through our sort of workflow, to help address and support the front counter work, so that they are empowered. We understand how important it is to give quick answers. But a lot of times, planning issues are really complex. And so I think if you want to show up, and you're a constituent, and you want to know if you can rezone a property to something that doesn't meet the policy, you're not going to get a really clear answer. It's going to be more, here's the path that you need to take to get that done. So that's different than saying, can we subdivide? If that makes sense. And we get the gamut.
It does. It does. I just want to make sure you're able to appropriately staff, but we're in a budget hearing, so that was my question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
All right. We are at time. I don't see any last-minute hints. Thank you, Ms. Kemp, and Mr. Lehman, and Mr. Rucker, for your time. And we are done for today. I think this is our last day. Yes, this is our last day of budget hearing. So remember that your wish lists are due by close of business tomorrow, council members.